Good evening. I'd like to call the Bellefonte Borough Council Business Meeting to Order, September 5th, 2023. First of all, I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the home for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the virginity of God's law.
Mr. Stewart, could I have the roll call, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Here.
Mr. Brackville.
Here.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Ms. Stan is excused. Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
I'm here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Great. Thank you, Ralph. I'd like to announce that we did have an executive session held before this business meeting, working on an agreement. And then now, any additions to the council meeting agenda? In accordance with Act 65 of 2021, if a matter is not on the agenda, council cannot take official action on it with some exceptions. The council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to its agenda through a majority vote. The council should state the reason why the action is being added to the agenda. Is there any council member who would like to propose in addition to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, and that is the public comment period. There's no deliberation entered into by council at this time. Folks who wish to speak, please come to the podium, sign in, and state your name and address, and any item that you were speaking about, and we'd like you to limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak public comments this time? Nope. Okay. Next item, Communications. Mr. Stewart, would you take that?
Sure. First one is information about the Fall Leadership Conference of the Boroughs Association. If you're interested, please let Alyssa know in the office, and we will get you registered for that. Next item, just a reminder that the Center County Boroughs Association Fall Meeting is coming up. We did change the date. It's going to be Wednesday, October 18th, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. As we get more information, we'll be sending that out to everybody. The Center County Planning and Community Development Office has some updates that were in your materials. Bitter Township is doing a zoning amendment. The information is there. We typically don't comment on other municipalities doing amendments, but they obviously must notify each of us, so it's there for your information.
Just out of curiosity.
Yes.
The thing that was in our packet, those were the requests for changes from the Planning Office at the county level?
Yes. Well, the Planning Office is assisting and sending that information out, so yes. Bitter, I think, falls under the county. They don't have their own zoning, is my understanding, so the county Planning Office is involved in the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Next item is, as you know, maybe know from previous discussions, our police department uses a central booking center, which is located at the county prison, and they have been talking about for a couple of years about raising their fees for having each municipality that has a police department make a contribution. So that information is there. We wanted to put it before you, and we will be considering that in our budget process. We're also trying to set up a meeting with some officials with the county to get some more information, so we'll have that when we discuss this later on in the budget process. So we list that as no action at this time. Another similar item is the Center County Liquid Fuels Program Application. We just want you to be aware, we received that, and we'll be looking at some projects and looking at making application into the county's liquid fuels funds that they receive. We received a notice that the Downtown Bellefonte Incorporated Under the Lights event, special event, is going to be canceled. It was planned for October, the Brick Area, Tally Ram Park. They've decided to cancel that event. There's a request here. Bellefonte High School, class of 1966, would like to do a plaque to honor a fellow classmate who did a lot of the concrete work in Tally Ram Park when it was being developed. And I know in the past, when these requests come in, we typically get some input from the Tally Ram Park Committee before any actions taken.
So could I make a motion that, based on our prior history, that we tabled this motion until, or this issue until after Tally Ram Park has made the recommendation, has to if and where this plaque may be placed?
We could, we don't have to table. We could just ask for the recommendation and bring it back. It's not that...
Okay.
Just pass this along to them to make a recommendation in your motion, if you would, instead of table.
Okay, then. I didn't know how to do this. I had two different ways to do this, was to hold, move to hold on a decision until we get a recommendation from Tally Ram Park Committee as to if and where to place the plaque.
Right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
One thing that was mentioned in the email was that this gentleman is in poor health, and he may not live much longer. He would like this accomplished before he passes.
I personally, I don't think it should take that long. If Ralph or Don contacts Tally Ram Park Committee, they can either meet virtually, or they can do an email discussion, and we could probably have it back at the council at the next meeting.
We will send it out tomorrow.
So the problem is, we don't know what the plan looks like, even if there is a plaque yet.
No, I don't think, I don't think there is.
I think that's going to be a problem in the timing.
Yeah, I mean, they at least wanted to get permission, maybe talk to Tally Ram Park officials.
I know, yeah, I know in the past, what they have been doing is these plaques. The reason this has happened is that there was a period about five or six, there were so many requests for memorials and plaques that the Tally Ram Park Committee felt that we were being overrun with signs everywhere in the park. And at that point in time, they said they didn't have a problem honoring people to do this, but they wanted to have control overs to the style and where they go. And most of them now that have been done since that have been put inside the train station. But whether that's what they want to do in this case, who knows?
What they recommend, we don't know.
Right.
But we'll find out. So, any other?
Yeah, I think they're asking for permission to purchase a plaque. We will pay for it and the installation, and we will work with the borough. Can't we just get this moving and say, yes, buy your plaque, but we will approve, we have to approve it. So before you buy it, come and present it to us, and tell us where you'd like to put it, so then we can approve it in one swift. Can we at least move forward with letting them go out and get this plaque that they want to buy and present it to us next time? I mean, they're saying we will work with the borough. I get it. I get that. But let's say, yeah, go buy your plaque. As long as we approve it, we'll allow you to put it in our park. I mean, Ms. Kye.
I would think that there's plaques over there that have memorials too, then, that they could copy from, if they want to try to keep these plaques in the same venue of what it's for. And I just, you know.
Kent, I think we're having this group contact and work with Tally Ram Park Committee. What you're wanting to do can happen in the next two weeks. And then, once we know what the recommendation is from Tally Ram Park Committee, they will also know, and they can move ahead. I don't think it's a very long delay.
What you may not know, the history, is in the past, anything that goes into the park has to be approved by the Tally Ram Park Committee. And so, you, being new...
I don't even know why it's in front of us.
Well, it has to start here. It has to start here, and then we move it to them. It sounds like a long process, but it is the way it has worked in the past.
Can't we just let them decide whether the plaque is something they want to do? Like, just get that before you do?
I think, I think that, not to belabor this, I think that is what Joanne is suggesting, is making this motion, giving it to them, and then working with this group, and deciding on the design and the placement, and then it will come back. And we have to put the final stamp of approval on it, just like we do for our, it's an advisory committee, but we can also approve it tonight, if that's what this council chooses to do.
Can we make it conditional of some type? Can we amend that a little bit to be conditional of the Tally Ram Park Committee approving it, and letting that, that way they can get, start getting the plaque and stuff made up. But if we're going to wait two weeks just to give them an okay, doesn't make sense.
Well, if you want to amend that motion, that's fine. I mean, I'm just a referee here.
I think they need to put some time on it, or it may not come to fruition at all, in the time that they want to do it in.
Ralph, let me ask the question.
Yes.
If we pass motion as is presented, can you let Tally Ram Park, tell them that we need to have their recommendation by the next meeting?
Absolutely.
And that puts the time limit on it that he's asking for?
Absolutely. I can convey that, yes.
Okay.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Other comments?
So we're giving them permission to present this in two weeks to the commission? So they can get the ball rolling?
No. They will, Ralph will get hold of them. The Tally Ram Park Committee will do their job and bring it back to council in two weeks, and then it will be done.
That's what I'm saying. I'm thinking, once they do their job, they should be able to put the plaque in, and then get our approval afterward. I think we approve it right now, but now we're hold up with what the plaque will...
So I think what Kent may be saying, I don't want to speak for you, but he would like it to be approved by that committee and started even before it comes back to council.
That's what I said. That's what I said.
Okay.
And he said it. Maybe I said it differently, but if they approve it, if the park approves...
This guy's request is ridiculous, Lisa. This is...
If the park approves it, they should go ahead and do the plaque and put it in.
As a new member of council, I understand. I went through that process as well. But it happens that this committee approved, I wanted to buy a park bench, but I can't, because they won't allow any more park benches. All right? Somebody tells us what can be put in the park and what can't be. Is that accurate?
No.
No?
They'll allow you to buy a park bench. They just won't let you put a memorial on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, unless they approve.
No, they won't. They don't approve memorial. They don't approve memorial plaques. They're all in the train station.
Yep.
All right. Well, hmm. Okay, so, any more discussion? Is everybody clear what we're voting on now? Roll call, please. Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Okay. Safe routes.
Yes, there's a report here from the Safe Routes to Parks for the month of August. It's there for your information at this point in time. I believe that's all we have under written communications.
Okay. Next item, Consent Agenda. I'm calling for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
As written?
Second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rita. Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item eight, which is reports. Mayor, you're first on the list. Do you have something for us today?
Yes, I would like to spotlight a young man named Caleb Vinge of Scouts BSA Room 34 with the Juniata Valley Council, as he has achieved scouting's highest rank of Eagle Scout as of February 5th, 2023, and he will be honored later this month. What an honor for him, and the time and dedication that he took. Caleb's a senior in high school, and I know the community is very, very proud of what he has done and that accomplishment.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yep. Office of Community Affairs, there's no action items. There's a memo in your packet for reports. Any questions that I may not be able to answer, but Ralph and Don might, from, okay. Current and old business. Item nine, 2022 CDBG Award Letter. Wood decking replacement.
That involves a suspension bridge. Just, it's a positive letter that we finally got the work approved that we've been planning on doing for quite some time. So Don might have some other details, but it's a very positive letter that this project was approved.
Just two takeaways is the, just so you can see how much the borough's allotment will be, is approximately $117,000. Reminder, 18% of that goes to CETA COG for administering the program, and we still have the 2023 funding before we'll actually embark on the project. So we'd be looking at next year at this time to get the 2023 contract, and then we can start the work.
Other comments?
So I think, just for the public's sake, that means there's not going to be any work done for the next year or so. And if you have problems with the bridge, just let us know, because it's not in great shape.
Yes. Well, we have the walkway that's along, so it's in great shape.
Yes.
Next item, encroachment by property owner on 1201 Pine Circle. The property owner has been sent letters from the borough and the authority solicitors, giving him notice to remove the encroachments within 60 days. We have no actions?
There's no action. We just, that's in process, so we'll keep you posted. But the owner probably has the letters by now, and hopefully we'll have some cooperation there.
South Spring Street Streetscape Project. There's a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday, September 6th. That would be tomorrow at 11:00 AM in the council chambers. Everybody's familiar with that project.
Yes.
It's moving along. Item 10. Okay, we have a bid opening for the Parkview Heights Stormwater Project. Looking for a motion and a second to allow the staff to review, approve, and select the lowest responsible bid. Second. Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Holderman. Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yep.
Okay. 2024.
He has to open them.
Oh, here you are. I didn't know if he was going to open them here or whatever.
We have two bids, John Nastas Construction and John Klar Excavating. The first one is John Nastas Construction. Okay, we have the total base, total base bid, $155,350. Rock removal, $127. Okay. The base bid, $261,495. Rock removal, $625.
Deducted, or?
Yeah, just do the deduct.
I didn't get the first one. That's $625.
$127. And then the second one was $625.
Thank you.
How do you spell CLAAR?
C-L-A-A-R.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all, Mr. President.
Okay. So I think we're the, we already had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? We'll do a roll call, but when you are ready, Mr. Holderman.
Okay, I already had us that. We did the...
We did.
Okay, okay.
So we should be good.
Thank you. Good. Just testing.
Just a second. Since I'm new on council, keep me straight.
Yeah. 2024 Budget Development Process. Staff is working to develop departmental needs for next year. Draft fund budgets will be presented at upcoming work sessions. Due to the cost of software and the need to maintain the chart of accounts used in municipal budgeting, we plan to use a trimmed-down version of priority budging, budgeting. Do you want to, do you have any explanation for that that you want to add?
Well, just as I indicated, the software is very expensive. We really only got numbers for two years out, and no numbers for beyond that. So it's very cost prohibitive, and what we thought is the information that's most important is just the top expenditures of every fund, like if it's personnel, if it's electricity, whatever it is. We want you folks to see that we're going to put our best efforts forward in developing some ways to express that information through some charts and those kinds of things, and have some of the same discussions, but a lot less activity, or a lot less homework for you guys to do in between work sessions. So we think it'll be productive and effective.
So what I'm hearing, and tell me if I'm wrong, we have the stamp program listed for, in doing our budget, we had four priority goals. We're not going to be seeing these at all?
We can reference those, but it's not going to be the same as we did last year. Last year, we tried, we presented this priority budgeting process, and, you know, this year we wanted to look at how to adapt that or work that in.
Streamline it.
Streamline it. But it's not possible unless we purchase a very expensive software package, which is just cost prohibitive. Like, if we were a big city, maybe we could do it. But, so we want to do something similar, and we'll let you, if you want the stamp...
I would still like to see the stamp goals in there.
We can produce those. We have that in a PDF. We can put that in with every fund that we send out. But we're going to spend our time developing on pie charts and charts that show you where the money's going, the top areas of where the funds expenditures are going. It'll be very straightforward, very easy to read, and will be, it'll be an effective process.
Ralph, are we doing the priority budget like we did last year, or are we opening it up to more departments? I think, what was Public Safety or Public Works was last year?
We're going to try to do these top areas of expenditures for every fund. We're going to show you where the top expenditures are, and, you know, make it easy to read, and, you know, you'll have some questions for us, and that's a process that we're going to go through.
So let me, let me put it in a different context and see if I'm understanding you correctly.
Sure.
Let's take the, let's take an easy budget, the parks fund.
Parks fund.
Okay. You would give us like the top three or four, the most costly things.
Yes.
And you would lump everything else together and, and put that in a pie chart? Is that what you're saying?
We're going to show you the standard, traditional, traditional budget that Lori uses, and it's called the Chart of Accounts. It's going to have, you know, the electricity costs, all going to have those corresponding numbers that go with each line item. You will still see each line item.
Okay.
We will then take the top expenditure areas and put those into charts. Some funds, like, you know, the street lighting fund is electricity, and there's not much else.
Right.
So I can't say each fund's going to have the top five, because it may not be relevant.
Right.
You know, the CDBG fund, or the fire...
There's just one.
The fire equipment fund, there's just one, okay? That's what I, I can't say the top five, but I can say the top areas of expenditures. We're going to make that very evident, and you make, you're going to have questions, just like you normally do. You're going to say, can we trim here? Can we add there? You're going to see the list of needs, just like you normally do. You're going to see the chart of accounts, just like you normally do. But we can't, we can't go away from that chart of accounts that's used primarily in municipal budgeting. So we were looking at trying to buy this software program that may have assisted us with that, but the two-year prices, you know, were just outrageous, and then beyond that, we didn't even get a price. So we couldn't even lock in a price to really fully use priority budgeting.
So are we going to get started then with the funding? Like, if, you know, we start to look at, what's it going to cost to put this, you know, to have our workers do this, this, and this? Are we going to go back to that?
Yes.
And get that moving this time, and make sure everybody's under where, and there will be charges for some of these requests?
That's entirely up to council. We're going to show you each fund. We're going to show you where the money, where the expenditures are. We're expecting to have that dialogue, just like we always do. Where's, where's the expenses? What can we do differently? You know, those kinds of things. But, yes, each... But yes, each fund, Randy, the general fund, the water, the water and sewer fund goes through the authority, but I think of the general fund because it's the biggest one we work with, and it has streets, it has police, has a lot of things underneath of it. Parks is a good example, too.
If I remember, I made a motion that we continue to work with this at this time.
Yeah.
During the same budget time.
Yeah.
So we don't forget, and people know what's going on.
I will show, we'll give you as much information, but it's going to be a different process, is what I'm trying to say. We're not going to have you do the homework, filling out questionnaires or going into our database to do a survey. We'll save you all that work. We're still going to show you where the top, where the top expenditures are, and you can ask the same questions, you know? What can we do differently to lower expenditures or change how we do things? It'll be a good process, we're trying to make it more effective and more efficient, you know? So that's our goal.
Any other questions?
And when is this going to start?
Soon, you know, Lori is working, you know, we just presented the audit, it's at your seat. She spends an inordinate amount of time behind the scenes working on, you know, not only the audit for the borough, the authority audit, she does all of our accounting processes. She was not really ready to start, you know, sending funds. We have all these, I think there's like 13 different funds total. We'll show you the revenue, the expenditures, and projections. We project out to the end of the year, and then, of course, we have a budget, proposed budget for next year. Likely, the next meeting, we'll start seeing some of the simpler funds, like maybe fire equipment, street lighting, some of the ones that we typically see early. And then she likes, and we're very conservative in this, the more months we have in as data, the less projecting we're doing for this year and the better our numbers are for next year. So typically, she has good numbers, but, you know, obviously November for the general fund, which is always the most difficult fund to balance. But we'll start, probably likely start to see some funds by the next work session.
Okay. Thank you, Ralph.
Sure.
Next item, 2024 Minimum Municipal Obligation for the Balfont Borough Pension Plans.
This is a, these are pension numbers that we must put in the budget for 2024. There's a police pension number that is our, just as it sounds, minimum municipal obligation that we need to place in the budget since we have, and we actually have three pension programs. One is the police pension program, one is the older defined benefit program, and one is the newer non-uniform cash balance plan. So there's a total of three plans, each one has a minimum municipal obligation number. It could be zero, in one case it is zero, the other numbers are there before you. Once those are approved, we're going to turn around and ask you to approve this corresponding resolution that goes with the police pension program. In essence, it's saying that we currently have a 3.9% contribution rate for the employees. We're not changing anything. It doesn't, it's very convoluted the way it's worded, but in essence, that's all we're saying is we're not changing anything. So we do that by a resolution, that resolution goes in our audit file, and it's used by the people who audit the pension program to see that we said we would not change anything. Now someday, if we do change it, we do it through a resolution process.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution 09052023-01 for the three plans.
So we have to accept...
Wait, we have a second?
The resolutions for the one plan, the motion I'm looking for is for accept the three plans.
Okay, make it that and make it the three plans. I thought they all went together.
There's two motions kind of written down here.
Yeah, I see it now.
Okay, so, did somebody second that?
I didn't hear one yet.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused, maybe you...
I'll try.
Looking at this, the minimum municipal obligation for the Balfont Borough Pension Plan, is that the non-police one?
There's three, so you have to be more specific.
Well, this is the second page, it says Minimum Municipal Obligation Worksheet, Balfont Borough Pension Plan, 14-03-3...
Okay, that's the old defined benefit program. That's what we call the traditional plan.
Okay.
It's kind of phasing out.
Okay, so that was the one that has no obligation?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. The second one is the 14-03-3-2.
Yes. And parentheses, it says CB plan, that's a cash balance plan. That's the newer plan that we adopted.
But that's not the police one?
No. That one has, the one we just spoke of, the cash balance, non-uniform we call it, is, has a minimum municipal obligation of $124,930. That number goes in the 2024 budget.
Okay, and then the last one is the police?
Yes, last one, again, it's in the title, Police Pension Program. This one has a minimum municipal obligation of $106,892.
So we've got a combined obligation of $124,230, more or less?
Yes, now, it's, you know, the general fund takes care of the police. The other, the other numbers are receive revenues, like if some employee works in the water department, that's funded through that department. So it's not all, what I'm trying to say is, yes, those are the numbers, but the revenue is coming from various sources.
Okay. And so the employees will be, in both cases, it's partial employer, partial employee payments into the fund that we're taking.
Yes.
So for the public's purpose, this basically $230,000 is not coming directly out of taxes.
No, no, no.
It's partially, it's partially employees and partially our responsibility.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to make clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
So did that include the resolution?
I think we need to do...
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution of 09052023-01.
Good. Thank you, Deb. Discussion on that motion?
I didn't see it in the packet, was it there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see. I thought it's there. Yes, I saw it earlier, I think.
It is there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Because I have to download each one individually, you could easily have skipped it.
It should be there. I have.
How about here?
There's I go.
All right, you ready?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Okay, thank you. Next item, 11, Council Member Comments for the Good of the Order. Do you want to start, Kent?
Hey, that item that you talked about tonight, Ralph, that's a good thing, that property dispute that gentleman brought up. And that he came to us and you guys were able to send somebody out to help him and resolved it, and it's kind of like it's a legitimate complaint and it's going to be resolved, so that's really good.
Yes.
It's a positive thing that came out of a resident coming here and speaking up, so that was good.
Yes, it took some while getting the attorneys and everything together, the survey and everything, but yes.
Yeah.
Would you like, Shawna?
No, I don't really have anything.
Johanna?
So kind of to the same effect that Mayor Johnson mentioned with Caleb Vintage, on the Girl Scout side of that, they've seen in like the Gazette and Lucky and Express featured Abby Wiser, another, I think she graduated recently from Balfont, earned her Girl Scout Gold Award recently, so that's the highest award in Girl Scouts, and had done a lot of work for St. John's School, doing their playground area behind the church and painting it and making it a really creative place for the school kids to play. Taken her theater background into that also.
Thanks.
So I was excited to watch her process on that over the summer, and she was up there painting on some of those really hot, terrible days.
Settle? Thank you.
Ralph? I'm good, Ms. CD.
I'm good.
Dawn, comment?
Mayor?
I'm good.
I'm good, thumbs up, good meeting.
Joanne?
We're making it out in 35 minutes.
Can I slow down?
Absolutely.
Pennsylvania trivia, today in history, September 5th, 1774, the first Continental Congress convened in Philadelphia.
I guess I forgot to ask, well, we didn't have a work session.
I still have trivia, it's all right. See how much fun it is?
Anything else, Deb? Thank you.
They're still arguing about something, but...
Rita?
Don't you want to do a trivia question?
Sure.
Well, I'll do my thing and you come up with a trivia question. How's that sound?
If you get it right, you don't have to come to the next meeting.
I was just looking at the calendar and I thought that would kind of make this my thing. I'm going to highlight a few things that are going on in the calendar in the next two weeks. Balfont Moose is having the Rubber Duck Race, looks like on Sunday coming up. And what else did I say?
I have a ticket for that.
You have a ticket?
Yeah.
Cool. Looks like there's a baseball showcase camp out at Governor's Park next Friday, or Saturday and Sunday, the 16th and 17th, I'll clarify that. And, oh, we have a free tire collection at the recycling center in State College.
When?
The 16th. And I haven't done this in a long time, I might give a shout out to Rodney and Carrie.
Okay.
All right, do you have your trivia?
During the Revolutionary War, which I know you all are familiar with, what city did they hide the Liberty Bell in during the Revolutionary War?
Baltimore?
Somewhere.
All right, forget that one.
I see answer to that, geez.
What is the name of the waterfalls that are referred to as the Niagara of Pennsylvania? In a touristy attraction area that's no longer?
Ricketts Glen?
Yeah. Starts with a B. Bushkill Falls. Bushkill Falls. And the city that they hid the Liberty Bell in during the Revolutionary War was none other than Allentown, Pennsylvania. Nobody even had any guesses. I got to make it easier. I'll go back to my handbook.
How about Molokonshu? I'm going to merge into a joint, or yeah, a jern.
Easy, right?
I'll second that.
Time to go. Motion to adjourn.
Brackville and Joanne.